Progress means tomorrow, but when we talk about Wednesday, they're really pushing the whole aspect of it. At least one way in terms of direction, you know, tomorrow.
Yeah, I know, the basic thing. I have a question. Do you know all those place on the board?
They're pushing past them because they will call them. Yeah, because it's just that law and something, it'll be harder to get them than it is to see.
You know, the British that sounds, people like, certainly not exactly. I'm here, I'm here. So how are you? Are you ready to touch on that?
It is. And that part of the conversation is their structure, but it's mean some hard stuff. Oh, I know. So much I respect, so maybe.
Good morning. This was your day, this is yours?
Yeah, sure.
Go back. Hey, our cookback's over there. That's the stack over there.
I'm anxious. I want a tree from up right by me. I know they were walking, they were both over. Yeah. I'm a professor. It's a workout. Done. Well, it's a very. I hope you're all sober tonight, but now it's. November fifteenth, lane in each direction. We gotta meet at two o'clock. But what I'd like to say is, once it's closed, three days, it's all different. Whatever our security, if we use brown and blue.
Hey, I want a pancake, so let's get a test. Cmart, so we got a little more variety, so. I want pants, right, for me.
Other ones I see are little things. I think.
You have to go try and find something, it's stupid.
Someone else's life.
No, I didn't, I haven't seen anything, I don't see it on running. I mostly, I just read online, watch it on this, because it was not the feature. You know, what we do in. My wife, it's been a year, she hasn't. Oh. Seven, seven. Of course, the last year. Small guy, Alex, I was too, back in, Jackson made, you know, back in one of seventy-five. She took it. Basically, she's.
I didn't have the money.
Second agent. Yeah, she knows. I can ask you a question. Say your name, service. Second thing. Especially now. How many?
Hey, you are good.
As much as. So. Sure, sure. Looking better. Have you seen him?
I heard of them, it's hard to, like, I think it's. Or, yeah, not as live and happy as that. I heard they're poisoning, this same. I did.
It's a practice. Jeff's here. You're already sitting.
Rob, maybe you can update that. No, we don't get that thing.
What's open? So, the meeting is, they shoot after Friday, in these one way in directions. We generally need to move, recently.
What's, what's your plan?
Because they even look a little ways in the past, it floods are full, then they lose the pace, the compliment. And then what they're doing, the big segments are all in the water. Seven, sixteen.
Where do you see it? Oh, number sixteen, okay.
You can call orders, North Canton City Council meeting, seven ten P M. Won't be prayer marked, do you like to leave?
Yes, and I got something to explain, so go ahead. So, before, this is part of the prayer too, but this is about, everyone has these little bows that I've just handed out. And everybody knows, this is the hundredth year of our Christmas tree lighting this year. So, we decided that we would put a hundred bows on the Christmas tree with little tags that tell people the blessings that they have from North Canton. So, what they're called, they're called blessing bows. So, what we'd like you to do is write on there, and it explains that, we're gonna have one of these at the Y N C A, at the library, and at City Hall. We're gonna play it, as many as we can, to put on a hundred bows, if you put a couple on this bow. And so, if you don't mind, you know, there are markers there, but they have a pen. It's write down what you're blessed for and live in our community. And then we'll just, as you can see there, there's a bow there, there's a couple of bows that will hang from each bow. And we'll put them on our tree this year, as we sell it, the kind of here for our tree. So, you'll all do that by the end, we're trying to get that. So, let's. Lord, thank you for bringing us here this evening. As we have said so many times, we've given so many wonderful things in this community, so many things to be blessed for. So, help us to continue to have the responsibility and the attention to the things you would like us to move forward with. We wanna thank everyone here, and the people in the audience, everyone who puts the time and effort into trying to move your will forward. For those that are coming on, and those that are leaving, wanna thank them for all their services. And the ones that are coming on, we wish them all the best as we move forward, and to be the kind of community you'd like us to be.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Here.
Here.
Bolts.
Here.
Here. Please, here, sort of.
Here.
All right, thank you for your consideration on your motion and the second to approve as presented, Committee of the Whole Minutes, October seventh. Special Council Meeting Minutes, October seventh. Council Meeting Minutes, October fourteenth. Special Committee of the Whole Minutes, October fourteen. Committeeing the Whole Minutes, October twenty-first. Special Council Meeting, October twenty-first. Special Committee of the Whole, October twenty-eight. Special Council Meeting, October twenty-eight. And Financial Reports, October nineteen. And also Liquor Permit, Main Street.
Motion to approve as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Okay, motion carries. And just a quick note, any legislative requests for the second second Committee of the Whole meeting must be submitted by Friday, November twenty-second. And at this time, from Mr. Dress Council, please step forth, state your name and address for the report.
Turk Oxman, three oh seven Fairview Street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. At the start of North Canton City Council meetings, there is a roll call to determine who is in attendance of the so elected members of city council. The presence of at least four members constitutes what is called a forum. Mayor Andrew Heston defines a forum as a number of officers or members of a body that when duly assembled is legally competent to transact business. Members of city council are elected by the citizens of North Canton to represent the concerns of its citizens. Membership of city council does not include the city's law director, as he is barred by law from holding due positions within city government. There are a multitude of reasons why a city's law director cannot serve simultaneously as the city law director and as a member of city council, the planning commission, zoning board, or water board. The foremost reason is that it presents a huge conflict of interest for that attorney. An interesting parallel is seen in the private sector, as described in a fall nineteen ninety-six article in the publication Litigation titled, "The Conflicting Rules of Lawyers as Directors." Attorneys Robert Cummings and Megan Kelly underscore what I just stated above in the second paragraph of their article with the following, and I quote, "Problems faced by lawyers who assume this dual role include conflicts of interest, loss of attorney-client privilege, disqualification as litigation counsel, loss of independence, increased risk of individual and firm liability, and loss of insurance coverage." It is a good bet that law director Ken Fox was unable to defend the city and the litigation over the water board, because he is listed as a, as part of a four-member water board and has a conflict of interest in this dual role. The role of a city law director is as a legal advisor. Any other added role beyond that raises a multitude of issues, as described in the article, the article cited above. Over several years now, law director Fox has taken on a role far beyond that of a legal advisor. In addition to his outspoken role on city council, law director Fox has continually inserted himself into actions that intrude on the appointed roles of the members of the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals, among others. The water board I alluded to earlier began as a dispute resolution board, which consisted of a city administrator, the finance director, and the law director. With the addition of one councilor, the group suddenly became the water board late in twenty seventeen. The transformation to a water board sure resulted in the removal of a law director to avoid conflicts of interest for the city. And this brings me to the water board's most recent meeting, which did not serve the citizens of this city. On October twenty-four, twenty nineteen, at nine A M, on a Thursday morning, and on tenable hour for the average citizen, North Canton City Administrator was absent, leaving only council member Saretta and finance director, along with law director Fox and attendants. Excluding the city's conflicted law director, this left the board with less than the required number of members for a forum to legally conduct the meeting. The sole purpose of the meeting was to discuss waiving an overage on a water bill in the amount of thirty dollars for a senior citizen. The meeting was transcribed by a court reporter at a cost of a hundred and fifteen dollars. The salary for law director Ken Fox is forty-five dollars and twenty-four cents per hour, amounting to an annual salary of ninety-four thousand and ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents. A video of that order board meeting has the city's law director detailing how he reviewed two and one half years of order meter readings while researching whether to waive the unexpected spike in the senior citizen's water bill. All of these costs were expended for a thirty-dollar overage. This is not the role of the city's legal advisor. North Canton's experiment with its first hometown law director should end. And lastly, let the laws, rules, and regulations resume the function for which it is still named. Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone else wish to address council, please step forth, state your name and address for the record.
Bill, now, five oh nine Backwood Street, Southeast, North Canton. First of all, I just wanna thank everybody for the service that you do for the city. I know sometimes they're demanding, crucifying sometimes for some of the things here. Anyways, I am here because, again, because I mentioned to you about three weeks ago about the deer population here in North Canton. I called the wildlife officer that is in charge of this area. And I asked him about our deers here in North Canton. Somebody mentioned that there's nothing you guys can do. And he said that there was something to do, we are whole ruled that you guys can make rules and regulations as far as how you wanna conduct this, you can have a, do like some other cities do, they have a designated time where they have for deer hunting. That restor and get permit through the city and the state. You have designated areas where you can only hunt, you can only hunt for so many years, you wanna deer a lot to get. And the only reason I bring it up, we have a lot of deers. The other day, we saw a big, huge buck running down the middle woodside. I mean, and I saw big bucks in my own backyard, eight pointers, and I'm like, gosh. And my, I have a nephew, mine, who love to get that. But anyways, different neighbors have said something to me already about the deers, they're not even afraid of it anymore. She tries, you know, they go out and try to chase them away, and they just stand there, huff and puff that shit, everything else. They're ready to do something. Others, other ones will just stand there. And we literally have to go up and chase them away in order to hear them run. But in my own backyard, it took a year, we had a bunch of them just run out, we had babies all the time. They're cute and all, but when they grow up, and they start destroying your property, then we got a problem. And so, that's, that's all I wanna worry about. I appreciate if there was something the city could do about, about that, I mean, there's, you know, there's one place to go, that's up in Haywood. They're all up there, they're prepared, they're a lot, they have a population out probably up there. But there's, there, like I say, you can have designated areas and whatever, I know we can't use guns, bow hunting, bow hunting would be the ideal thing to use. Guns would be definitely out of picture because of the fact that if somebody uses guns, we're gonna say.
Jeff? May I respond?
Yes, you may.
For all of those who are watching this, in comfort of their own homes, and those gathering tonight, there are only three ways to remove deer. You put your finger on it. First of all, it is with a firearm. Everyone needs to understand that when you discharge a firearm in the city of North Canton, and you hunt deer, the object of that bullet is to tear through the deer, so it's dropped. In other words, once the gun is discharged, you have no control over where that bullet goes. And everybody needs to understand that in our given yard, if you go, discharging a firearm in your neighborhood would be extraordinarily dangerous. A. B. Bow hunting. Everybody needs to understand that you shoot a deer with an arrow, it does not kill it immediately. It bleeds out while it runs. So, whose driveway or backyard will be the final spot, rescue spot for that deer? You could work on a hand. The other solution is what's called trapping bolt, which is exactly what it sounds like. You trap the deer, you put a bolt through its head. I haven't found too many volunteers for their yards for that. The fact of the matter is, one of the challenges we have here, and I've looked at Sol, and I've looked at Shaker Heights, et cetera, we don't have enough park distant from our housing. So, while even trapping bolt is gonna be a fairly gruesome procedure. I haven't had anybody call and tell me they wanted to do it in their yard, or they would like to have it in the adjacent park. The cost of dropping a deer is about eleven hundred dollars per deer. That does not include processing, processing the deer, which is an additional expense. Typically, what we would need, Bill, is, and I will tell you right now, I will not do anything unless we have overwhelming citizen support. Given controversy, fistwounds, taking deer, and if you, if you wanna flavor of it, go up and get on Shaker Heights' website, they've got action on the news, they've got, they've got tabs, it's a deer study or whatever. There's a process that we, that they went through. But what's important is to read the comments, because that's the environment in which we will be making a decision. And I can assure you here that the comments, Bill, were not very positive. So, it's extremely controversial. What Shaker has, what we don't, is they're using firearms, they're using professional sharpshooters, but they have green space that is distant from homes. And again, I don't wanna have to explain to someone's three-year-old, we're killing Bambi, the pride and Santa of his sled deer. You know, I just really don't. So, I understand the problem, I've got a buck who's in my backyard, he's got eight points, he's got two hundred pounds, and I know exactly what's gonna happen in my backyard comes spring, after the regrow of vegetation. I get it, I'm sympathetic, but the fact of the matter is, we just don't have a lot of tools. If you had been up here, I wanna say, when we had Katz's conversation, we had people who were expressing a desire to feed the deer up at the Kmart, that's part of the problem. We have people who feed deer. The reason I have deer, I've got somebody who's feeding a deer in the neighborhood. The reason I have here, I've got somebody who's feeding their deer in the neighborhood. Have you?
No.
I'm doing everything I can to repel them actually. But it's, it's, it's a very difficult situation. Shakers come through, and Solon did, and I would encourage you, I mean, if there's another solution out there for a community of our size and our unique construction, I'm open to it. But I just don't think that we ought to be trapping and bolting deer on parklands that have homes built right on top of the park.
Maybe they could tranquilize them, carry them off.
Uh, I don't think so. Deer run, that's part of the problem. Tranquilizers are not instantaneous.
It's like when you had the bear problem, that was the same thing, when the bear was roaming around North Canton. If you hit it with a tranquilizer, they can run up to a mile.
And that's a problem with deer in a bow arrow, is that they bleed out. So, if we go that route, we take your number personally, we take those calls.
I understand, I understand. You understand, but firearms are definitely out there, so no ifs, ands, or buts about them.
Bow arrows, bow arrows up to a mile, that's the problem.
I have to kind of disagree with you a little bit on that one. But they do run, that's grand, but there's a lot of times, if you get the deer to right, you draw them, and they run only a little bit, and they drop. I hunted before.
The fact of the matter is, one of the things that you will see if you look at the Shaker report, they asked citizens if they'd be willing to have hunting on their property. And the only one who responded was, no.
Okay, why don't you do that here? Why don't you put that as a question here?
Well, I think that's, that's part of the whole process, if you're going to go do it. There's a whole process that's involved. That begins with a community survey and analysis, but it begins with an analysis of the problem. A, and that's what guy from the NR shape told you. You really, if you're going to run a hunt, you've got to make sure that you meet certain criteria. Zebra, traffic accidents, you've got to have some pretty serious vegetation destroyed, et cetera. And the next thing after surveys, you've really got to look at it, you've got to make a determination over if this situation is as serious as some with a lab or a lash. And then you got to block, hire, hire someone to execute the plan. And as I indicated, sharpshooting in Shakers is eleven hundred dollar per deer cost. Pre-processed.
I'm just saying, there's something we can look at here, and there's, there's fees and designated areas that we have here. And I understand what you're saying, exactly, Joe, I'm just saying.
I'm not convinced you have the area to shoot here, either bow arrow or gun, I'm just not convinced. You know, listen, if deer, if bow arrows were, maybe using bow arrows in Shaker was a solution. It's really not. Let me ask you this question, would you be willing to have a trapping bolt in your backyard? I mean, we can kill them, if we can get a, get a, would you be willing to have trapping bolt in your backyard where the deer dying?
Hey, if they're destroying my property, I have no problem with it.
That's what I need in here.
I have no problem with it. I've been in war, I've seen it.
Fair enough.
I know what's going on.
Fair enough.
So, this little stuff about the deer and all this, Bambi and everything, when little Bambi grows up, little Bambi's going to shore your place. Now, if you want that to come happening to you and everything all the time, well, it does go ahead.
It does not, they've eaten most of what I have.
Well, I'm just saying, and you understand too, that we have a problem here in the city. And I mean, if we had any accidents here in the city with deer running across parks, I mean, how many more do we need? I mean, how many, what happens if somebody gets killed by this? Then we're, then we're... We're going to wait till that happens, and then decide, you know, maybe we better leave this. I'm just, I'm just asking, bring it up, something by, if you don't want to make things bad, that's fine. I understand what I hear, I mean, Joe, and what I see, a lot of you heard something.
I will, I speak for no one else who understands. But unless I'm convinced there's overwhelming public support for killing deer inside the city, I will not support it.
I understand it, but we can't even move forward unless we have a questionnaire, number one, if it goes out, when our questionnaire is set up to the city, just ask, hey, everybody is against it?
Sure.
Drop.
It's done with Shaker.
It's done, you're something.
Nine, I think nine questions.
Yeah, it's a W, so your question, remember your, your answers, then give it to them. I'm not doing anything. But if you get a little round of feedback, then it's something you've got to do. You know, responsibilities and everything else, it can involve, say you have designated areas and all that other stuff too.
I conclude my response.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President. Anyone else? Okay, we move on to old business, and then motion in second degree by title only, under reading ordinance sixty-seven dash nineteen.
Seven.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, temp.
An ordinance amending chapter nine-three-five, water lines and hydrants, codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, specifically section nine-three-five point zero to connection charge, otherwise, et cetera.
Thank you, Chairman, sir.
Yes, we talked about this, this is the third read, and we discussed that this is to change the connection charge. I move that we put this in the third read.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Have a motion in second degree by title only, second read, ordinance sixty-eight dash nineteen.
So moved.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, temp.
An ordinance authorized the mayor of the city of North Canton, on board for full approval, entered to a contract by and between the city of North Canton and the city of Canton, for the purpose of providing legal representation in Canton municipal court for the prosecution of criminal cases at total cost not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars per year for a period of two years between January first, two thousand twenty, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, Chairman, sir.
Yeah, we've talked about this a number of times, and something we're over here. Are there any other questions, I need to adopt. Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, thank you. Have a motion in second degree by title only, second read, ordinance seventy-six, actually.
Seven.
Second, all favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, temp.
An ordinance amending ordinance number fifty dash zero-three, zoning ordinance of the city of North Canton, corresponding tax man, to change the zoning district of the parcel situated at the southwest intersection of East Maple Street and State Route forty-three. Stark County, current parcel number one, zero, 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 six, six, zero, zero, from general business district, B two, to parks and recreation, of Parks and Institutional. Do you know?
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, we are changing the zoning from, as it states, G V B, to Parks and Institution, it's where the old VP sat on forty-three and the East Temple. I motion we adopt.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Have a motion in second degree by title only, second read, ordinance seventy-seven dash nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Upstanding.
Member Fonte, abstains. Uh, temp.
An ordinance amending ordinance number fifty dash zero-three, zoning ordinance of the city of North Canton, corresponding tax man, to change the zoning district of two parcels situated at three-thirty Schneider Street Southeast, Stark County, current tax parcel number nine-two-zero-one-eight-five-two and nine-two-zero-one-eight-five-three, from two family residential to office buildings.
Thank you.
Yes, we spoke about that, we pulled off the map, these are two parcels on Schneider, we're going to move to become office building, which they're sort of set up on that street perfectly. I motion we adopt.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Close.
Upstanding.
Member Fonte, abstains. Motion carries. We go on to new business, motion in the second degree by title only, first read, ordinance eighty-eight nineteen. So moved. Second. All favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, temp.
An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of North Canton, Ohio, for the period beginning January first, two thousand twenty, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Declare the same, please.
Thank you, Chairman.
Laura, do you have to let you discuss anything?
Okay. Can you look in your packet, there's a copy motion in there. Any page that has draft eleven-seven nineteen up in the top right corner is a piece that changed from what you had last week, it's very key. If you'd like, we go, we go as individually as certain people. Do you mind?
Yes, yes.
The first one, page two, please, that's where it was discussed last week, under the one-on-one, one-on-one, fifty-five-hundred, we added the personal protective equipment, gas masks, and body armor, which is something that I missed in the first part.
Laura, where is that? Can you give me my...
Sure, it's down at the bottom right corner.
Oh, okay, yeah. Thank you, I'll print things out.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If you go to page twelve, that is the mayor's department, and after the election, the mayor's office let me know that a new mayor decided to have a cell phone, and the old one did not have one, so we added a cell phone line here, that's the only change.
That's five hundred dollars?
Yes, that's what it started with for the year.
Right.
Page twenty-six, this is the next one. The only change there is down in the front two-eleven, it's actually the very bottom line, like a kind of maybe piece of what they're, where you see return of advance general fund, two hundred and three thousand. That's the useful funds we're going to get for the east hill project, those will be spent upfront and reimbursed by the county, so we'll advance that money in twenty nineteen, and then we have to return that advance in twenty twenty-one. So that's what we do right now, that's the only change. Page twenty-nine, down at the bottom of the page, the very first set of accounts, three-three-zero-one-on-one, fifty-five-hundred, we added network segmentation for twenty-five thousand, to the police department.
Which one again?
That is, three-three-zero-one-on-one, fifty-five-hundred. And what is that?
What is that?
The network segmentation, that's to split out the network between PD and the rest of us, is my understanding, illustration, when you go to the library. Right now, the network is very slow, because if you kind of picture a whole lot trying to go on, so the now, you best be like trying to drink a milkshake or straw, and it's a small straw, it's very, so the traffic on the network is very slow. This causes calm down in the PD, specifically with their cameras and their monitoring and the looking of dispatch, there'll be times, due to the network, you'll see just kind of frame by frame by frame, and it'll kind of miss, I don't know if you hear from a police, you know, it can be a lot from this frame to this frame, but they can't, you know, they need it to flow. They also have problems, you know, we have the voice forms that run through the internet as well, upstairs and utilities, they use a CMI software, which is the utility software, they've experienced these problems. It's just been a growth through the years of so many more things on the network than we used to do. So we feel segmenting and out, and the two separate networks will help, and just be more fast and efficient.
So is this a one-time charge, or is this something every year we do?
Now, this is the charge for network engineers to get in and to segment it to two separate networks. And then you get back your regular, ongoing, you know, network maintenance that we're all in that, but the segmentation project is a learning factor. And needed in this world we live in today. Page thirty is marked simply because the sub point here is to page twenty-nine.
I didn't catch that one either.
Page thirty-two, the change there, and the next follow-up we go through, is we had one employee, very often involved, signed up for family health insurance, where we have a forecast of singles, so the health insurance line increases in water, it will also increase on page thirty-four. Page thirty-six, the sewer, some reason. And the page thirty-eight, which is one of the killing parts of the city.
What was the other page you said for our six?
And thirty-seven is marked simply because it's the total of that fund.
Laura, I have a question about CIC, there's no money going into CIC this year.
Correct.
Good question.
Mike?
I was thinking, we were trying to figure out where this money went.
Well, originally, the CIC was funded over a period of, I believe, fifteen years. That period is up, so there's nothing in the ordinance in place, council had to add that, or we wanted to add it to the budget, that would be the place.
I was just curious, because I still see, how much is going into the fire range?
Well, the fire range money is money that's already sitting there, it's been transferred in prior years into that one, and it's appropriated now in case it needs to be spent. But it's not usually very hard, it's been, of course.
So I was just thinking, as we look forward to the downtown redevelopment area, that I was thinking would be good, I think, to make sure there's money going into the accounts of opportunities, we're in a position to figure it out through the CIC. Just, that's my thought to this.
I think it's a good idea, if we're looking at the change in our downtown, we may have to purchase some things that would come out of the CIC, I would expect. So I don't know what we have in there, but I think, looking forward, we have all these things here that we want, and some of them really, really bad, and is there a way we can kind of trade off and get some money in that CIC? I think that would be a very prudent thing to do financially for us moving forward.
The CIC currently has over seven hundred thousand dollars in this account.
She doesn't go very far, we'll start purchasing properties. So I would never say the CIC has enough money in it, in my opinion.
Patrick, do you have anything else on that, or is that something down there?
I would probably be on the side of not giving any additional funds to the CIC. We are working on a number of economic development acquisitions that should become to fruition. I think we take that as a case-by-case basis, and see what funding mechanisms are available to basically happen. But I don't think, if you, if you take money out of the budget now and put it over there, you tie up that money to have a general fund here, and you may not, you come to a deal, whatever you could have put over there wouldn't be enough to take care of the deal by the end. So it's a bigger discussion.
Well, I, I think, you know, you don't have to throw in a hundred thousand a year. And if you don't throw it in now, when? So, you know, adding twenty-five grand is good enough, you know, we add things, twenty-five grand, we say, okay, that's fine, but for our future, twenty-five grand could be a lot if we keep doing that, doing that, doing that. So I think it's a, it's an attitude, kind of thing, where we think we're headed, and how much do we think we really have. If we just wanted to do something, like you said, all of a sudden, where are we going to get that money from? We've got it, it's planned for the future. Whether it's this time or next time, we've got to really make that priority.
But adding twenty-five thousand dollars a year, fifty thousand dollars a year isn't going to do anything for it.
Surely going to do a lot more than not doing anything?
No, I think it depends on the type of deals, looking, if they're looking at just the facade brands, or set up, the way things look on the each began, that makes a difference. If you're looking to go out and acquire parcels and whatnot, and look in the six figures, you're going to have, you're going to have to find this money.
But that would offset how much you would have to find, it's either way.
Yeah, well, that money's always available if you have to do it. Well, if you're going to go out, if I'm going to present something to you that, I'm going to say, I am, just saying hypothetically, if you were to have an opportunity to consolidate three parcels into a new city block, and that was eight hundred thousand dollars, you don't have any of those kinds of dollars, so in the CIC, so are you going to, is the city going to give money to the CIC to do that? That's a discussion. Is the CIC going to borrow it? Can the CIC borrow it? I will never answer those questions. But I do think that, you know, the projects that we have looked at recently are a big ticket item.
I think we should put on the talk about sometime down the road, to figure out a plan where we're gonna generate revenue from. Because I think it's gonna be an important piece of the downtown redevelopment area.
I'm proud of the committee meeting on down the road, as well as revisit forty, as you know. What's that? I'm gonna jump in there. For any budgets. We're gonna put sidewalks up too, right? Well.
We got a lot of.
Sidewalk area, we can replace it. Good discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other options to share for the budget?
Is there a motion to adopt the first reading?
Moving to adopt the first reading of ordinance eighty dash two thousand nineteen as presented by CIC.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Reports, Deputy Director of Administration.
Uh, one thing I wanted to share was, um, you know, I recently went to the event, this whole conference in Columbus, and, um, there was a woman who spoke there. She does the, uh, Director of Development Services Agency, Lady Mahal. She's the former mayor of Finley, first woman from that position ever. She spoke about twenty twenty census, and really wanted, um, us to continue to, to say in every, um, opportunity, you know, how critically important that is gonna be, you know, to community. Um, and to announce that anyone that's interested in running a little extra income while helping our community, um, there are census shots available. You would go to twenty twencensus.gov, um, and, and there's various positions, and if you want to get involved and help, um, you know, the census, every ten years, counts for population and households, and provides the basis for disturbing one six hundred and seventy-five million in federal funds annually to support cities, communities, and vital programs. So we're supposed to, you know, talk me up once it gets coming, and definitely if anyone's interested, go to the, the second sign up for more information. Um, that's all I have, other than locally, the leaf bank, or, and we're still running on the leaf recycling, and we will be winding up soon, so if anyone's interested in picking up banks, you go to Tru Value, and get them in, just pick the program, that's all I have.
Thank you, Director of Administration.
I'm Mike O'Malley. At that. Yep, so I will.
Well, Mike, thank you.
Uh, I wanted to say that the administration has been, uh, working on the transition plan. And, uh, we, we, uh, met with, uh, Mayor-elect, Councilman-elect, uh, briefly then on issues that the council has been addressing for some time. Our intent is to continue with these updates and these meetings, so that come the, uh, you know, the transfer, the orderly transfer of the reins of government, that the, uh, ongoing process on the issues will, will be completed. Not to say that you have your other sides of the issue, or different issues that you want to talk about, but, you know, trying to give you as much history as I can on some of the things that we have been working on and that we're trying to finish up into twenty twenty.
Yes, uh, was this, is this, or is it? Yeah, so I had a chance, uh, I had a chance to talk with, uh, Mayor-elect Steve Wilder, and I told him that he, that he has my full support. Uh, you know, when you, when you look at, uh, after fourteen years working in the city, you know, I've worked with, uh, Steve Wilder for, uh, starting as the administrator for eighteen years. So we've had a lot of opportunity to work, uh, together, and, you know, all of us in this room, you know, have worked with so many of you for years. And you know what's ironic? It's the one thing that's become really clear to me over the years is that, you know, whenever we're focusing on the mission, and what our mission is, it's always to find the best ways to serve the community. And then the big, the big discussion always becomes, what method are we going to use? That's where oftentimes, some of the methods that I would propose as the mayor were actually the exact opposite of what we ended up doing. And two of those best, best methods for making our city great, uh, one was, uh, I had proposed to raise the impact gap. And it was really a knee-jerk reaction, because we thought, how are we gonna function? You know, we just lost a newer company, we're taking a big hit. How are we going to function? The council said, we are not raising the community. You know, you have to reduce some of the employees. I just remember thinking, oh my gosh, this is gonna be, you know, a terrible situation. But we did go from one hundred and sixteen employees overtime to ninety-one, we accomplished that. The next thing was a performance audit. I thought, oh, this is, this is just going to be a rough, rough road. And I think it was, uh, Councilmember Volton was his idea, but that was the second best decision we made. Because, uh, they were both, both items were, were, um, initiative, and I wasn't looking forward to, it wasn't something that I proposed. And so, so I guess what I'm getting at is that, you know, if we're always focusing on what is the best way to serve the community, it's okay to propose things, it's okay to say, gosh, I changed my mind, I guess this isn't the best thing, because none of us have all the answers. We simply do not have all the answers. And so you look to, you look to others, you look to the residents to give you input, to give you ideas. And, uh, and even like Chuck, you know, Chuck, Chuck has been giving me ideas for eighteen years, since I started as the administrator, right? And then me, he has my cell phone, he follows me on my cell phone, and, and really, when you think about it, I mean, Chuck has reported me to a number of governmental agencies over the years. Uh, but I think it's all with the intention, nothing ever came of it, because we were doing this right. But, uh, always keeping me on my toes. But you know, the thing is, he really did make me a better elected official. Really did. And so, you know, I guess what I'm getting at is I would encourage all of you, you know, to focus on what the overall mission is, which is to best serve the people. And when you get into the disagreements, and, you know, the questions and the discussion, that's all part of the process. But in the end, you know, uh, you find that place of agreement, you find what best works. So it's been great to work with all of you. I mean, because I can say everybody in this room, there is no doubt, has the best interest of the community among them. With all of them. And that's what I think has made it, um, I think that's why it's been, we've been so successful here in the city. And, uh, so with that, that's all, that's all I have to say.
You also can. Director Ball.
Yes, being its veteran state, I want to thank the active-duty service members, the veterans, the retirees, and certainly their families for their service and for the sacrifices that they make on our behalf.
Director Finance.
Your report.
Did you agree on it?
Yes, thank you. Uh, actually, the last couple of weeks, we've been sort of wrapping up some of our bonus projects, using some of that leftover money we had at, at the end year, as far as, uh, getting good prices, getting stuff done early. And a couple of things we've just recently wrapped up is, uh, the P A patch on North Main from Starbucks up the road. Got that done, we can do Saturday. That's much, much better than we've got the last couple of years, till we have our grant, so we pay for that section from Starbucks to Oreo. And also, uh, under construction now is, uh, a couple of waterline areas. We have three breaks in the Portage in Shire and Hill Press kind of triangle. Last winter, came in after budget time in March, April, was in with the frosting. So we're getting active and carried, with a couple of purchase orders, so we're seeing that underway now up there. And, and also, we got, uh, reconstructed that western five hundred feet of Sunland Street. And I first came here and looked at that, thought, wow, that's, uh, becoming more of a North Canton street. So we're able to use some of our savings, and we took that left it up and looked it up. We got lots of, you know, much smaller ones, curb a better pieces here, better catch basins, that's the weatherman of ours, who's in my house.
Ember Hardbrake?
Ember Hardbrake. We have a meeting, the county engineer has a meeting tomorrow morning, and, uh, just for a project update, to see exactly where we are. We met last Wednesday morning at, at Project Field Office, and the goal was to have it open one lane in each direction Friday. With the weather, and tomorrow's weather, see if that's still doable. I guess I'm about to find out tomorrow morning, but the goal was to have it open one lane in each direction, Friday the fifteenth.
Thank you, Rob. Yep. Number Ball.
Your report.
Number Fonte.
Um, I just wanted to say, it was great serving with the mayor and Marshall Peasum. Uh, boy, we had a lot of big conversations over the years. And so I'm looking forward to seeing Steve and Matt join ranks and get dialed in to what's really going on up here. It's always interesting to sit in the audience, try to get to know what's really going on. So hopefully you guys can help add to that and make it even a little bit more exciting, right? Uh, for the city of North Canton, we've been working play. Also, uh, the ball director, uh, thanks to all his service. I know sometimes he gets dicked pretty bad, but I'll tell you what, man, he's dialed in, he's great. And I always want to ask him questions, because he always sets me straight. So thanks to him for your hard work, and for the veterans, and for you, and, and the gentlemen and ladies in the audience, and all the veterans, uh, we couldn't have the freedom to sit here and, uh, talk off things and, and speak our minds uh, without the sacrifices that the men and women made before us. So thank you.
Number Foltz.
Thanks for talking, it sounded very good. Veterans Day, you're, there's a lot of great ceremonies going on today, and, um, we're this country for your daughter veterans. Can't say thank you, no. That said, um, I hope it won't be blasphemy, honestly, but I do want to wish the mayor and Marshall well. Um, served a lot of years together, and, uh, we've had a lot of interesting, uh, conversations. But, you know, when you put yourself out there to be elected, it's a special person wants to do that. And, um, to come here Monday nights, and to care about your community, that's what it's about. It's not about the money, it's about caring about the community. So I think you guys both care about the community, and I, I really enjoyed, I'm working with you. Sure, I'll add that later on this month, but I just want to thank you for your service, your support to the residents here.
Still got a couple more.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. But I want to make sure that I'm out, and also welcome to the new elected officials. Looking forward to working with you, because that's really what this city is about. If we're gonna change, we're gonna change together, and hopefully we can reach some consensus and continue this strategy to make North Canton the excellent city that it is. So thank you. That was my comment.
Thank you. Number Ware.
Thank you so much, I wanted to say, so I will repeat it. Uh, and I know we have another meeting, so, uh, hopefully we can say, but, uh, thank you, you know, for your service. And thank you to all the veterans who have served. Um, I have two girls who are serving right now, and so, uh, it was just a special day, thinking about what, um, they're doing, and all their friends, and those who've come before them, and those that will come after them. Uh, thank you for all that you do, so, thank you.
I agree, thank you to our veterans. Have a great day. And I also want to say, congratulations, Steve, I did reach out to you, I had your phone number, so, congratulations. Matt, I didn't have your phone number, so hopefully we can talk after the meeting, congratulations. And I've had a great sixteen years, it's been a lot of fun, guys, so, I know I've got to go on a meeting, so, no, nothing else.
And number Sherr.
Uh, yes, uh, for Veterans Day, I attended our service, that was really well done. So I would continue to do that, and it's a high priority for us, it should be for everybody, so that was very nice. We will have other meetings, and, and so I'm not gonna go too much into, to right now, these two about. I did reach out to Steve and Matt, and look forward to working with them, and helping them where they needed, and, uh, looking forward, as we always do. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, before, I ask for a motion to second going to executive session, I want to jump ahead here to the November. The early December schedule, on the eighteenth, we have Committee of All Public hearing at six forty-five and six fifty. The twenty-fifth will be a regular council meeting, and the seventh second will be the organizational, uh, followed by Committee of All. So at this time, uh, I entertain a motion, a second, going to executive session to consider the employment and compensation of public employees. The executive session will not be open to the public.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Oh, you're wrong.
Oh, that's right. Laura, we.
The vote?
Yes.
Fonte?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, East Hill. Yes, Suron.
Aye.
Okay, so seven members, uh, for yes, we are in executive session. Yeah, please fill out your questions, though. It would have been a little box. Just as you get the vote.
I'm sorry. Would be happy to. And your guy is regrouping. No, I'm sorry to hear about that.
Take my phone on vacation.
They do it for you.
Give you your own coffee.
I got an email, it's good. Thank you, Ross.
Hey, Harold.